No, these were the four. The one in the studio.
One next month is one after that.
Okay, we'd like to call the meeting to order. This is City Council meeting for May 22, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How long ago could you do the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Snow. Hughes. Watzniak, absent. Wilms.
Here.
Fowler. Houncho. And the mayor.
Here. First order of business is citizen input. First speaker is Linda Lloyd of 102 Fairway.
Okay, great. I'm here to speak about septics. Back in October of 2021, City Council, after 10 months of hard work by a whole bunch of people, passed an ordinance to require builders who were building more bedrooms than the septic to put deed restrictions on their properties. And this information as of the end of April. By then, there had been 137 houses that were deed restricted. I've been able to find 27 of those that have gone through the multi-list, and only two of those 27 were actually listed for more than the deed-restricted number of bedrooms. So it seems that that's working. I did turn in both of those two as violations. However, there still is a huge problem with existing houses. The end of April, I noticed that there were 53 houses listed in Bella Vista as having four, five, or six bedrooms. And other than the ones that are on public sewer, most of those are not listed properly because there's very few actual four-bedroom permitted septics in Bella Vista. So I went through every single one of them. There were six that were listed as having five bedrooms. One of those was on a two-bedroom septic. Five of those were on a three-bedroom septic. There were 17 four-bedroom listings that were done incorrectly. Nine of those were on a three-bedroom septic, and six listed as four bedrooms were on two-bedroom septics. So I did not spend time going through the three-bedroom listings, but I suspect there's a good percentage of the three-bedroom listings that are actually only on two-bedroom septics. So we still have a huge problem with existing houses and how many bedrooms they're being marketed at. I compiled all the addresses, sent all that information to the Northwest Arkansas Board of Realtors, to every member of the Board of Directors, and to all the staff on May 8th. And as of this morning, I had not gotten any response from any of those people, which as a Realtor distresses me considerably. So I still think we have a good job, a hard job to do about protecting buyers in Bella Vista and preventing a whole bunch of septic failures. And then this morning, a new listing came through with five bedrooms. It's actually a current STR, and I researched that one. It's a 3,963-square-foot house listed with five bedrooms and three baths, and it's only on a three-bedroom septic. So I do hope Council doesn't lose track of what's happening with their existing housing stock and how it's being marketed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Parsons of 2729 Duvalin.
I am Colonel Parsons and live on Lake Avalon, as you said. And on September 1, 1939, the German Panzer tanks rolled across the Polish border. Kamikaze, not Kamikazes, but the Luftwaffe was pounding Warsaw. And the Blitzkrieg was on. And Basha Burner, Basha Barbara Burner, nine years old, joined the Polish Army. She fought with them for five years. For any given day, she could have been gone before a firing squad, or worse, off to Auschwitz. And we just honor her so, and we're trying to do this to these who are in their 90s, World War II people. We've been doing this for several years. Recognize them while they still can hear the accolades that we have for them. So Basha, if you would, please come forward. Turn around here and face the camera. On behalf of the Bella Vista Patriots and a grateful nation, it's a privilege for me to hand this award to you, Basha, for your service during World War II.
Thank you so much, and I'm really, I'm really so honored and touched. Thank you very much that you let to do it and such wonderful people around here and the council and everything. I was never expected of it, and you were such a surprise, and I thank you all for being here and just contributing to it.
We love you, Basha.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Unfortunately, we have a smaller-than-usual crowd today, but that will be available on television for further viewing. Next speaker is Tom Judson of 36 Kentire Land.
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bella Vista Property Owners Association. I'm sure at this point, you're getting tired of seeing me, but I promise you, we are rapidly approaching the end. We only have two more after this. We have a number up for today, so it's consuming a large portion of your agenda. I do apologize for that. I wanted to remind those in the audience or at home that once again, the POA's only intent is to continue with the current use and historical use of these parcels. We don't plan on doing anything crazy. We don't plan on bringing in a Dollar General or anything like that, and no disrespect to Dollar General. Also wanted to point out once again that the POA, it would be very, very challenging for the POA to sell this property. It would require a vote of the entire membership. They would probably not approve it. Also, on all these parcels are deed restrictions that require these parcels to be used for recreational purposes or in support of recreational purposes, such as golf course maintenance facilities. And those deed restrictions would travel with the land. So if on the unlikely instance that we were to sell these parcels, the future owner, not that we're planning on doing it, would also have to abide by these deed restrictions. So that's not our intention. What we're trying to make sure we do is we have all of these parcels zoned correctly. If anybody is in the audience today and would like to speak with me, after the last application, I'll probably pop out. And if they want to speak with me in the lobby, I'm welcome to answer to any questions at all. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Burcham of 13 Briegle Lane.
I'm here in regards to, I've been having a little trouble with trash pickup lately. The company has been missing Briegle Lane. It's happened, it happened just this past Friday. They were supposed to come by and they missed us. It happened also on the last billing cycle. It's not a major problem. It's just happening like once every three, like once every three months, they just miss us, and we have to call them and they come out like they did, and they came out today. My pickup is on Friday, so by the time that it's, we realize that they're not coming, their offices are closed, so we, so we have to call them on Monday. Basically, I'm here, I'm wondering, we're required to use Republic Services, and we have no other option. Would it be possible for Bella Vista residents to have another trash provider available to us?
We usually don't have a back and forth, but we can comment after you're done speaking.
I guess that's my issue. I feel that perhaps I'm alone. I just feel it would be good to have, you know, an option for someone else to be a trash provider, pickup for, for us.
Okay.
You know, we're required, you know, we're, I hate to use the word "we're forced to use them," but you know, in reality, we are. I just, I feel that other cities have other companies available to them, and I just thought it would be nice if Bella Vista would have that option of someone else to do our trash pickup.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Now is the time for a council member reply to any of the speakers.
Look, could you provide that information or have you already emailed it to us? I can see an email.
No, no, I can't.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it.
One should have been sent to the council today. There should have been emails sent to the whole council earlier today regarding this issue.
Okay, I thought we were applying to everybody. I was.
Yeah, we are. You can take your seats there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, you were asking Linda.
Yeah, I was, Linda, right. Yes, sir. So you sent an email yourself, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Better check your junk mail. I seem to have things slip into the junk mail sometimes when citizens send it. Everyone.
Yeah, I'd like to say too, I just, I wrote, they left, sorry, Jim and Basha. And I wish they would stay for enough, a couple of minutes. My wife and I had the privilege and the honor, really. We were in Amsterdam last year, and we were able to go by the Anne Frank Hall. I've actually spoke with several people that have actually had that experience, and it's, you know, it's just very touching, you know. It really, it really does move you, you know, when you walk behind that bookcase and go up to the apartment, and you really learn the whole entire story and what these individuals faced and, you know, what it took, you know, to get through that, you know, to the end. And what she did was, you know, so incredibly brave. So I'm really, I'm really glad that Jim brought her in and presented her with that award. That was really amazing.
Anyone else have a comment?
From Ms. Lloyd, what is the answer to that particular problem?
It's not, Jerry, it's not back and forth. You can't, rules don't allow that.
Yeah, I think we can discuss with her offline, and I can think of some possible solutions to that, but I appreciate her bringing that up. That was a, a point that we were going to return to, you know, when we did, we did the, something about the septic on the new homes and knew that the existing was still a challenging situation. I'll make a comment on the trash pickup. I suspect that we're going to have to have a single company, but I'd be happy to look into that. It's not anything I've ever investigated in any way.
We have an ordinance that requires people to use the contractor that the city has.
Yeah.
So we grant a monopoly franchise to a company, and that's the condition, they take the contract. So no, we cannot provide another option or allow another option, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's what I suspected, because you normally don't get economies of scale if you start having, you know, different people have a couple of customers on the street and that kind of thing. Thank you for that, Jason. Any more commentary? Okay. Action on the minutes. We have minutes of our regular meeting of April 24. Anybody have any comment on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Circle. Yes.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Houncho.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Next subject matter is the financial reports. We have financials for the period ending March 31. I believe everyone on council has been provided those, and I think they're probably on the website already. So far, our financial situation is very good. We still have a significant reserve, and the revenues exceeded the budget by a significant amount. I believe it was 7.2%. And the most outstanding revenue compared to budget was real estate taxes. It was plus 16%. And on the expense side, expenses are below budget by a significant amount. So so far this year, we're doing good. You know, there's still a lot of financial experts concerned about a recession later in the year, and I think we're, we're as prepared for that as we can be if that should occur.
So do we know if, do we know if our revenue is decreasing? I know the county's revenue is decreasing.
Oh, both the city and county sales tax revenue was an increase over last year.
But county records indicate that they've got a decrease in revenue for the, so far for the year. Are you saying that the sales taxes are up for both the county and the city?
Well, our share of county sales tax is showing that it's higher than it was last year, and the city's sales tax also is, yeah.
I can tell county sales tax, our contribution, look, I didn't see the March financials.
Oh, okay.
They went through an email. Maybe we had an issue. I had an email. Ken, for some reason, I'm not getting her emails, and I thought they got it, so maybe they sent them out. I haven't seen them. Okay, you didn't get them. But through February, county sales tax, our portion is up $159,000 versus prior year. Our city's sales tax is up $37,000. So our total sales taxes through just February were up almost $200,000, just for, just for two months.
Yeah, yeah. Next, there's no more comment on the financials. The next subject matter is.
Do we need to take any action, Mayor?
No. Next subject matter is old business, amending the sewer connections required of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista.
Mayor, may, sorry to interrupt you, but.
Oh, yeah.
The motion, the, the chair needs to entertain a motion. Spend the rules, or I'll have to read all these word-for-word pages and pages.
Yeah, the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Second.
Roll call vote. That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler seconded.
Councilmember Wilms.
Yes, sir.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Oh, I already said that, I'm so sorry. Will, what did I do? Houncho.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, old business and ordinance amending Section 21 Sewer Connections Required to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista. To require a sanitary sewer connection when service becomes available within 100 feet of a house lot or adjoining lot and for other purposes. Now, this is just on second reading, and I believe Mr. Fowler has an amendment, so I thought you might want to mention that.
Yeah, so, we talk about 100 feet, and then Larry was actually going to bring an amendment forward, you know, to talk about 300 feet. And regardless of whether the amendment would be 100 feet or 300 feet, there are a lot of complications associated with either distance, because even with 100 feet, you might be required to go through somebody else's property. There, there are just a lot, a lot of issues that come along with it. And I thought it just makes sense just to simplify this and say that, and I'm not going to read it word for word, but essentially, if the sewer runs in front of the house, the side of the house, the back of the house, basically contiguous with your property, then upon sale of the home, you'd be required to, you know, attach yourself upon the sewer. And that way, it takes all the footage and the possibility of crossing other boundaries and whatever it might be. So that's the amendment that I'm proposing.
I would mention that after he proposed that amendment, I called Frank Nida Village Wastewater, and he was okay with it. He thought, he thought that would work well, would be fine. If anyone else wants to comment.
So is that.
My, my comment would be is that the way it's written here in the amendment, Councilor Fowler, the rear of the house would not entertain a street behind the property that was not contiguous. In other words, you have typically a street, a row of houses, maybe a common property area, another row of houses and another street. So if the sewer were on the street behind, they would not be required to connect. But if it was in the common property behind the house, then they would be required to connect. Is that correct? Is that what you're.
It, it, all it does is, and this was printed out and put in front of you, it's not in the packet, and there were extras in the back for those who are interested. It, it changes the language of the current ordinance by adding, or on the side or rear of the house, where it already said in front of the house. I struck the words "on the street" because they, there really is no need for it to say that, because if it was in the front, side, or rear, but for some reason it wasn't in the street or on the street, then someone might seek some sort of an exemption for that. So I, and the whole point of this was to remove those sorts of things. So if you approve this as this, if you adopt this amendment, it has to be available on the front, side, or rear of the house. So basically, you're just saying available to the house, is what you're saying, but that's exactly what the language is.
So to your point, could cause an issue if you have common property behind your house, and then the sewer line ran on the other side of the common property, then we're.
It has to be available. So keep, read all of it together. When the sewer, when the sanitary sewer system becomes available in front of the house or the side of the house or the rear of the house, for it to be available to you, you would have to be able to get to it without going across somebody else's property, be it common property or your neighbor's property or anything. It wouldn't be available in that circumstance. So that covers that scenario.
Speaking of that, I did watch the last work session on YouTube. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here, and I meant to thank Mr. Fowler for running that meeting. I appreciate that. I was at Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission. They had graciously, graciously offered to send a couple of our people to a, I guess I'd call it a seminar in about, it's about highways and sidewalks and paved trails and in every aspect of transit, really. And there's 1,300 people there from all over the country, including, there's about 20 people from Northwest Arkansas, which the Regional Planning Commission paid for, including the mayors of Batten, Nolan, Rogers, and myself, and a few other mayors, quite a few planners and engineers. So it was very worthwhile. It was one of those things you sign up for way ahead of time. You don't know what's going to be going on in the city council work session. Anyway, that having been said, I did appreciate Mr. Fowler's efforts in that regard. But what I wanted to mention on the sewer issue, Village Wastwa, I asked them the question also, having heard the discussion. They clarified that they pay. They clarified that they pay for bringing the line up to your property. So the only part, if you're connecting the sewer, the only part you're paying for is the part that's on your property, which is kind of common. I know in the past, I've lived in cities, and the sewer line breaks or something, or the water line. And if it's on your property, you're paying for it. And if it's before it gets to your property, they're paying for it. So people are usually very interested in where it breaks because of that. Anyway, I did want to clarify that because I heard some discussion about how much it costs and this and that. But they do get right up to your property line. So, okay, the next ordinance. Well, that was just second reading, so I assume we're gonna...
So my question, just for clarification, Councilor, Attorney Kelly, is that now if it's in the common property, and sometimes it is located in common property, the sewer line, and there are various areas where they put it there as opposed to being in the street because that's where it is. So if it were there, would the house be required to connect?
Is it available? In other words, does, can Village Wastewater go across that property and bring it to your house?
They would have it in the...
They would, it would be there on them to make that determination.
Yeah.
If they brought that pipe up to your property, then it would, and it's on the front side or rear, which is going to be any side, then you would be required to connect. Pursuant to the second section, which is upon transfer and all of that, none of that changes. Procedurally, though, have you made a formal motion to amend?
I haven't made a motion, no. The discussion was still going on here.
Okay, well, because he's getting ready to go to the next item. So if you don't want amended...
Yeah, I thought you didn't, Mr. Snow had something you wanted to ask about.
I've got a problem with this, with this ordinance. And I was hoping Mr. Hansel, after last work session, would propose an amendment requiring a, some type of a grace period if a person had just installed a new septic system, with that, what time or that time period might be, two years, one year, five years, whatever it might be, with a grace period if the person has a, had just installed a new septic system that is working perfectly, then I don't think it's, don't think it's fair, right, to, for that person to have to spend another 10 grand to hook on to the sewer system whenever they, again, they just got to do with that expense.
I, I mean, your point may still stand. I wanted to make sure you understood that this only applies, the old ordinance and the new one only applies upon sale of the house.
Yeah. So what would be the difference? I mean, somebody's got to pay, somebody would just pay 10 grand to get an intercepting system put in, and now they got to pay another 10 grand to hook on to the sewer system. As I said, there should be a grace period there of some type.
That could be another proposed amendment to the ordinance. Then it would have to be in conjunction with this proposal here.
No, as I said, I was hoping maybe Mr. Hansel would propose it.
I may be. That's, I was going to address this in the next work session. Just realizing that this is on second reading. The information that we got, you know, just a couple minutes ago, that puts my mind at ease about some things. But yes, that's how I was, I'm still trying to navigate through that amendment. And I will be discussing that in the next work session.
Good.
I don't want to interrupt, but I also need to be heard on this. Really, what you're talking about is the timing of when it's required. That really needs to be a separate ordinance from this one. All this talks about is the location where it has to be when you're required. There's another section of the code which isn't implicated in this at all. It's not the title or anything, which talks about timing. If you want to talk about timing, we can talk about timing and grace periods and all that. That's perfectly fine. We just need to have another, really, another proposed ordinance in addition to this one to talk about on that issue. Shouldn't it be separate the way we've done it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment as written.
That was a motion by Fowler, a second by Mr. Hansel.
That's on the motion to amend pursuant to...
Yeah.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion to amend passes five to zero.
So we can do a third reading next month.
Okay. Next ordinance is letter B. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48211, county parcel number 16-40236-000 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And the staff does request a third and final reading. Would you like to have Taylor Robertson address this?
Sure. She'll give an explanation.
Anything further to add from the work session about how they did say, any questions? Say it gets loud. Staff is recommending approval of this request, though. Staff will note that.
So what was the issue, Taylor? I mean, I didn't go back and listen to the planning commission meeting when they addressed this. So what was the issue in not passing it the first time?
You mean why the recommendation failed?
I should say not passing it, but recommending to move it forward to city council, right?
I'm not sure. And I don't really feel comfortable speaking for the planning commission why several members voted against the recommendation or not. Hard to speak from their heads, you know. But it's just one of those things. Staff still recommends approval, whereas, you know, the planning commission's recommendations failed. You can consider one or the other of our recommendations, but based on the maps and analysis that we've provided, our analysis here in the packet. But like I said, I don't feel comfortable speaking for the planning commission on why they voted the way they did.
I guess there was some conversation about campsites or something like that. And campsites are not a permitted use for the C1, but they're not really permitted use in P1 either.
Yeah, that was a discussion that was held about basically the rezon would not fix the existing use. However, that's not what staff looks at whenever we're making recommendations. We're looking at what could go there and what the future land use says. But that was a discussion that was held that basically if we did rezon this, it would not make the RV park a buy right use.
Yeah, and early in the year, maybe it was the end of last year, I don't remember what the time, it would have been this year, we approved the parcel...
To the east.
...continuous to this one, right?
Correct.
Where the deer garden is. And we approved that as a C1 use, right?
Yeah, so we will have C1 on the east and then P1 on the west, west side of the Blowing Springs Park.
I kind of look at it as all one piece of property. I know it's not officially. But I was just looking through, you know, C1 permitted uses. And we've got commercial recreation, parks, short-term rental, right? There's not a restaurant there because the deer garden's behind the lodging, but we have the...
Tiny cabins.
Structures, pardon me.
The tiny cabins?
The side cabins are there. Laundry is there. So, and I know that we really look to more future use. We do current use, but the likelihood of that use changing in the future is probably minimal at best. Or it's going to be used in some way, shape, or form in the same manner. So I'm not, in my mind, I'm not really sure why it was turned down. And I know you can't get in the heads of the people that are on the planning commission, but I'm certainly in the camp of approval of this rezon.
Well, the only thing I wanted to point out was the, it's consistent with the 2040 plan also. It should be rezoned according to that.
But I think the thing to recognize and needs to go into the record is that it currently has uses that are legal nonconforming. With the rezon to C1, it will continue to have uses that are legal nonconforming for the record. And those uses would include the camping sites, the cabins, and the RV park. Because none of those uses are included as an approved use in C1 district. And they're there today. They will continue to be there. But the C1 is to correct and allow other things on the site to be dealt with under the C1 zoning umbrella.
Okay, that's, do we know any? But it's my understanding that if there are any improvements that want to be made to current structures or additional structures that are put in play, you know, that could benefit that area, you know, in the future, that they would be restricted from doing that, correct?
Essentially, yeah. They're having a hard time even acting as a commercial entity zoning-wise because they are zoned as P1. So even pulling sign permits are difficult because there's not supposed to be signs in the P1 zone. So even though there's a legal nonconforming use of commercial use there, because it's zoned as P1 for new signs or permanent signs or anything that's small like that, it's prohibited. So this would get the overall use of just a commercial entity more in play with what's happening on that land right now.
Like some of the needs that they have to make it function better. So I would, I guess I would move to, take this to third and final. But this is the third reading? This is the third reading?
Yeah, it needs to be ruled as the third.
Motion to suspend the rules to go to third and final reading?
That would be my, that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Mr. Wilms, second by Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote. This is to go to third and final.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. I will go ahead and read it for third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48211, county parcel number 16-40236-000 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
I got a question. I'm not sure that Taylor can answer, but I see some social media from people and neighborhoods around that area that are concerned about that area becoming over-commercialized. I don't know that there is such an answer to that particular question. But what would happen to be another concern? What would happen there that would increase the commercial presence?
So regarding like future development, if there were anything in the plans, that would be more of a POA question. But from a zoning perspective, I can tell you that C1 has bulk and area requirements and basically restrictions that only so much of the lot can be developed and so much of the lot has to remain as green space and only so much of the lot can have parking on it. So we have protections in place for lots to be overdeveloped for C1. But regarding if there's any future development plans, that would be for the property owner.
What would be allowed there? What would be allowed that would be considered over-commercialization or an increase of the commercial availability to that particular area? Like what would be, if you can make us understand, what would be allowed there?
I think that would depend on who you're talking to.
That's true. I mean, yeah, that would be...
Well, let me look at our...
Just as an example, I mean, I don't...
In a C1 zone, if this were to be, or were to be rezoned, I mean, you have your use chart there. The permit requires C. I mean, it just depends. Because also, you don't, we do want to look at the table of uses, but also the suitability of development of the lot as well. There is some flood plain in this area, so that requires additional restrictions that they would have to go through when they're considering what they put on this lot. The setbacks, and like I mentioned, bulk and area, 60% has to be, remain undeveloped, 40% has to stay as green space. All of those things have to be worked into whatever development plan they are. So I mean, there's so many items at play to answer that question. It's really difficult. But regarding like what would be allowed if this were to be successful, the use chart would be the best item to look at.
Water slide wouldn't be allowed.
A water slide? Um, well, I would count water slide as playground equipment.
Yeah. So would it, playground equipment allowed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking, if you lived in that neighborhood, what would be, what would be happening down there that would cause you to be, you know, what could be happening that would cause you to be more concerned about the activities there?
Yeah, that would be, it just depend on who's living next to them, what concerns them, and what doesn't concern them.
If they're concerned about noise and activities, I think you answered your question, playground equipment or something that nature is allowed, but that potentially creates a lot of extra activity and noise and concern.
A water slide?
Yeah. That was just an example.
Yeah.
That would even be feasible in such an area. I got no indication of the water slide as proposed there.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, that would just be, that would be a park, really, and parks are allowed by right in all zones. So, yeah, that would be, that could pop up anywhere, I guess, I suppose.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
That's a motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
No.
Councilmember Snow. Councilmember Wilms.
Yes.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Mayor, you may choose to vote in favor if you so desire.
Yes.
So motion passes four to two.
Yes, correct. Okay, next one is letter C. Ordinance amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48614, county parcel number 16-18692-000 from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And there's another one, staff requests third and final reading. This has to do with the Lakes Ecology Lab at 410 East Lancashire. Any discussion?
Would that be approved? I make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Ms. Hughes. A roll call vote to move to third and final.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel. Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Is there any discussion?
Move to approve.
That was Mr. Wilmes and second by Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Uh, Jason, I don't believe I read that a third time.
Uh, you probably don't think you did. I think we need to, I think you, I'm glad you caught that because I didn't hear that.
Okay.
So, um.
You back up and do the last one over.
Go ahead and read it a third time.
Let, hang on. I, I think you can go ahead and read it a third time. I think that vote we just had is probably void as out of order.
Okay, yeah.
So go ahead and read it a third time.
The vote to go to third and final is okay. Okay, come read it for a third time. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone properties described in rezoning petition number 2023-48614, county parcel number 16-18692-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
So that's the third reading. Now we need to, a motion and second.
I'll make the motion again.
Okay. That's motion by Mr. Wilmes, second by Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. I'm glad nobody changed their vote. Okay. Next one is letter D. Ordinance amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48701, county parcel number 16-40211-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And I believe this is Huntley Drive, PA, water. Any discussion?
We, we had an issue at the work session about the labeling of the parcel number. Did we get a clarification on that? The plaque that was included with the handout shows the parcel that we're rezoning to be 000, not 002.
We, that was straightened out. If you recall.
If you recall, if you recall on that one, there had been a lot split after that drawing, if this is that one. And, and so the numbers, the numbers you have are correct.
So the drawing in the packet is not the most current drawing of the land?
I'm not talking about drawings. I'm talking about parcels.
Yeah, we're talking about the lot, the lot split or the lot numbering.
That was pre-split, so that is not correct. Your staff report and ordinance are correct, 002.
Yes. What you have in front of you is correct.
Okay. It is number two.
002. Yes.
Because we weren't sure at the meeting on Monday.
Correctly.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote. Is the vote to move to third and final?
To suspend the rules and move to third and final. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Lead, move on.
Ah, yes. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48701, county parcel number 16-40211-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next one is letter E. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48641, county parcel number 16-72511-001, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And staff request, third and final reading. And this is 504 Glasgow, which is Highlands Golf Maintenance.
I'd like to suspend the rules and go to third and final.
I've got a question on that one. I think this one here is, is one of those parcels that includes some of the golf courses. Does that create any issues down the road? That some of the golf courses don't, C1 and opposed to whatever the golf courses don't?
No. Golf courses are commercial use, controlled commercial use. So zoning wise, use-wise, it would just be more consistent with the zoning code.
So the golf course land itself, is that zone, C1?
Currently, all sits as P1 Conservation.
So it's not, it, it wouldn't create an issue for anything to have some of the golf course zones, one as opposed to whatever it is now?
Planning staff doesn't see any issues with it.
Remember, no rezoning is going to have an effect on the current use.
No.
Existing law.
Well, yeah, didn't want to do the legal non-conformity situation, so, so. That was my, my reservation about it. Got a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Taylor, I just, I think we kind of covered this a bit at the work session, but on every one of these, the staff request, third and final reading. Why? What is your reason?
Well, typically, if not very many questions are asked, we'll ask for a third and final because we went over the process of the rezone at the work session. These have been with us since May, I mean, March of 20, March 22nd, I believe. So it's not a short process, and that was kind of what we discussed last time about the basic or traditional life of a rezon request. But if there's typically no discussion or any public comment received between the public hearing and the first reading, staff will typically request a third and final if there's not really any discussion or questions asked. That's typically why it makes me request to the mayor for third and final, is if there's no discussion or questions.
No discussion, questions, but I know we have the area, the people around the particular area that are notified by certified letter.
There are no, there are four ways, actually, we notify the public for a rezone. One being the website that's over two weeks before the public hearing, certified mail that's two weeks before the public hearing, the legal ad and the weekly vista, two and a half weeks before the public hearing, and then a big giant red sign on the property 10 days before the public hearing. So we notify everyone immediately around it, 200 feet around it, the entire city via the website and the legal ad. So we notify everyone as, as possible, as much as we can.
So I noticed on a couple of these, there were some emails from, from some constituents that were concerned about the rezoning. So in that particular situation, you still ask for third and final whenever there is.
Yeah. Those comments that are included in the packet are comments we get for the planning commission. So those are for the public hearing that was held with the planning commission earlier this month.
My second move to third and final.
Okay. That's a motion by Mr. Hansel and a second by Mr. Fowler.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Uh, let me read it again. Amending the Bellevista zoning
ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48641, county parcel number 16-72511-001, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any more discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next one is letter F. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48404, county parcel number 16-72491-001, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And this area covers the Highlands Golf Club. Staff request, moving to third and final reading.
Go on. Suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote, council.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. I'll read it for the third time. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48404, county parcel number 16-72491-001, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wilmes. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next one is letter G. Ordinance amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48664, county parcel number 16-70204-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And this is Scottsdale Maintenance. And staff request, move to third and final. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for the third time. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48664, county parcel number 16-70204-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote to approve.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next one is H. Ordinance amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48673, county parcel number 16-21108-000, from P1 Conservation District to RO Residential Office District. And this is the area that used to be the Metfield Water Storage. I believe the water tank's been removed. Taylor, could you give us a little background of why we're going to RO?
The applicant had requested a original rezon request of C1 Neighborhood Commercial. However, bulk and area requirements require that C1 be a minimum of one acre. And due to setbacks and items like that, staff normally isn't comfortable recommending approval of a zone that is basically too large for the lot in itself because that could mean that the suitability for development later on, setbacks and things like that may be more difficult to develop. So staff requested a modification to RO Residential Office due to the small size of this lot, and it meets the bulk and reg requirements for an RO. So staff felt more comfortable with that request, and planning commission modified their recommendation to you guys to RO from C1.
Okay. Is that what they're using for it? Now is that consistent with RO or?
Maintenance would not be a resident. So it would continue as legal non-conforming use, just like it is right now in the P1 zone.
Yeah, but it's probably still better than being P1.
Yeah. I mean, they wouldn't be allowed to have signs or anything like that, so.
I'd like to make a motion to move third and final. Suspend the rules.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote to move to third and final.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for third and final. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48673, county parcel number 16-21108-000, from P1 Conservation District to RO Residential Office District. Any discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hansel. Motion to approve. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. I'll read it for third and final. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48673.
I made a mistake.
Oh, we did?
That was the final vote.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Sorry. You did the third.
So we're all set. Okay. Now we're on I. Amending various sections of code of ordinances the city available listed to effectuate departmental restructuring of planning, building, inspection, and code enforcement functions declaring an emergency and for other purposes. This was brought forward by me, so I'll give you a little explanation. The, this involves taking the three code enforcement officers from CDS and moving them to the police department and taking for inspection folks and moving them from CDS to the fire department. And I had a little written explanation there. I don't know if some of the reasons why. I don't know if you folks all had a chance to read that. But this is something that actually was in the back of people's minds for a while. And, you know, I've been on city council eight years. We've had three different people over CDS. And there's always been way more drama in CDS than any other department. It's really the nature of the beast. That's why I mentioned there's been three different people over it. It's not people running it. You know, code enforcement just naturally has conflict because if you don't enforce it hard enough, everybody on the streets mad at you. If you do enforce it hard, the guy who you just enforced it against is mad at you. So somebody's always mad at you. It's a summary of code enforcement. And there's a couple of cities, Rogers and Jonesboro, who have the police. And in the case of the fire, it's way more common. More and more cities are going for putting the inspectors under the fire department. One of the problems I have in particular is, you know, in the private sector, if you decided to do this, you'd go ahead and do it, and it would be done. In, in a city, in the public sector, one of the problems you have is before this meeting, you have to talk to the police and the fire and the head of CDS and all the employees involved. You have to talk to all those people before you do it. So now they're all in limbo. So what I would like to do is pass, go to third and final and pass this. And the reason council's involved is just because of the changes in budget. You know, the money, a significant amount of money is moving from one department to another. And I, I believe it's in the best interest of the city, and I'm trying to do what's best for the people. And, you know, one of the other things that I mentioned in my little write-up, it used to be that the city was doing 10 permits a year. Now they're doing 600. So the, the CDS job is quite challenging. Essence of the job is quite challenging right now. And I see things on the horizon in, you know, the commercial area. And also, there's, you know, we've had a couple of different hypotheticals come up where CDS would be more involved and, or somebody would be more involved. I think it would be CDS in taking care of grounds and parks and things like that already on the Greenway out to Metfield. You know, we have some responsibility for lawn mowing and things like that that we didn't have in the past. So I see things going. And later on in the agenda, there's something by the engineer on CDS. So they're growing in a lot of different ways, getting different responsibilities. So I just thought this was the best way to go with this. So that's open for discussion if anybody wants to say anything.
Could I interpose one thing? There, there is an amendment that I drafted that you have there in front of you. This is because of a drafting error on my part, okay? So the, we ended up changing something in here that I didn't intend to change in the draft that's in the packet. And really, what it is, it's pretty simple. The very last sentence, in what you have, we refer to volume one and two as the fire code and three as the building code. It should be volume one is the fire code and two and three are the building code. And so that's what this amendment does. So I would request someone move to, whether you end up adopting the wholesale change or not, if you would at least adopt this amendment so we can get it correct for your final approval.
So do this first, then talk about.
I, I would appreciate that because we need to fix this, no matter what you do.
Accepting amended version has been presented. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and second by Mr. Hansel. Roll Roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Amendment passes five to zero. Thank you for that, Jason.
I have another question on this code. If you turn the, it's on page four, top of page four. Let's see what section is it. Section three, subpart. Uncovering work. I think there's some braggadocio there that doesn't make sense. And I'll read it. It says uncovering work. Any installation or part thereof which is installed, altered, or repaired and which covered before being inspected shall be uncovered for inspection as required by the building official. I think there should be a word stuck in there somewhere to clarify that.
It's probably which was covered, you mean?
Which was covered, has been covered, is covered in the second line.
Give me three minutes. I need a little time to tell you. I know, just a minute.
I would consider it to be a typing error.
All right. So Mr. Wilmes, you're talking about in the draft, which would be subsection D.
D like in Denver.
Yep. Well, I can tell you that the current version says that. And that's because it was copied and pasted from the current code. I didn't change that part. So the current D says uncovering work. Any installation or part thereof which is installed, altered, or repaired and which covered before being inspected shall be uncovered for inspection as required by the building official. I think it says the way it's supposed to say. If you covered it before it was inspected, you're going to have to uncover it so it can be inspected.
Well, if you read it to me, it doesn't make.
Well, I can tell you that that's the current code. We need to, so I didn't change any of that. These changes in this ordinance are items in the code we needed to fix to account for the fact that these people are going to be answering to different departments. So they're in different areas. And so when I drafted this, I took our current code, changed what needed to be changed and didn't touch the rest of it. So it could be that we prefer some different things in various places, but I didn't attempt to change that. We need to, I would suggest we look at that as a future change or potentially a modification.
I would view it as a typo. In any event, if you need to correct the.
It's not a typo. It's the way it's written now. It's not a typo. It may not be worded the way you like.
Well, it's not a typo on your part. I think it was a typo from when it was originally.
Well, I did that too. So I, you know, that was just 12 years ago. But I don't think so. I think if you read it, it says what it's supposed to say.
I don't think so because when you literally read it, it says any installation or part thereof which is installed, altered, or repaired and which covered before being inspected shall be uncovered.
Yes.
And which covered, to me, that doesn't make good grammatical.
I didn't change any of that from the current.
I understand it.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting maybe we fix it now.
So in the future, we could change that later.
I don't think it needs to be changed. I think it says what it needs to say. But if you want to.
Yeah.
We need to be.
Yeah. Take a read on it. It's fine. It's written.
I kind of understand what you're saying, Rick, but I don't think which covered. I get it can kind of go either way. So anyway, can we?
We can move along.
Yeah. All right. We've got the amendment approved.
Move to third and final as amended.
Where are we now? We just, we just approved the amendment, right? You just amended the motion to suspend the rules, right? We haven't had, right?
Well, he just made one, but I didn't know people wanted to discuss it. Somebody can make a second and then we can discuss it if you like.
You approved.
We approved the amendment, but that's it. You are on debate on the first reading of this ordinance. You have adopted an amendment. It is now, it is on first reading of this ordinance, which is where you are right now. Right. So I do have something I'd like to say. I'd be very interested after, you know, the movement to third and final. Yeah, I mean, this is a big change, right? This is a big change. My wife and I were actually traveling whenever the mayor called me and said, I need, you know, you could do the meeting, but I need you to know a couple of things before because I don't know if you've seen them yet. And one of them was this. And first I was surprised because I didn't know conversations would take place. Because it's a big change. And, you know, you kind of get used to things being done a certain way and being structured a certain way, right? So, yeah, I had to think about it a little bit and I was still a little bit ambivalent about it. But at the end of the day, taking a step back, and I'm not going down the path of saying I think this is the wrong thing to do at all. Where I'm going with this is Mr. Flynn is the mayor and ultimately he's the CEO. He's the boss of Belvista City Government. And we've been advised in the past that we thought that there were issues with employees and certain moves that were made within the local city government. Those people answer to the mayor and we were advised really not to become involved in those conversations. Those are personnel conversations. And I think the departmental part is kind of like part of that personnel. So at the end of the day, as much as I might be a little uncomfortable, at least initially, it's not my call. It's the mayor's call. And all we're being asked to do right now is approve the changes in the budget, you know, to go from CDS to go to police to go to fire in order to support and pay employees as they move over. And that's really what we're being asked to do. We had the police chief here during the work session and we had the fire chief here during the work session. They had their opportunity to get up and speak and it feels like they're comfortable. I've actually talked with Doug and I know that they've been having meetings internally, trying to get everything organized. My only concern would be at this time is are we really ready to go? As long as the mayor feels that way, that we are, the police chief feels that way, fire chief feels that way, then, you know, I don't know how I can oppose not approving movement, moving the money around like we need to do within the budget. And then one of the reasons we're moving the money around in the budget, I don't think we said this yet, I think we said it last week, is because we're trying to clean away in June, right?
Yeah. June 26.
June 26, basically halfway through the year. It's kind of easy math, if you will. So having said that, I hope we're all ready to go and if there are some issues, you know, to work out. Because really, the way I see this, moving people, I think there were some blurred lines in responsibility between the CDS, well, the inspectors and fire. And I think there were some blurred lines between code enforcement and the police. There kind of were some shared things there, responsibilities. And I think over time, I think those are going to be clarified and solidified in the long run. And I do think in the future, and I'm not putting a timeline around anything, I really don't know. I do think we're going to be, see some development in the future and it's going to be more than just residential. I think it's going to be coming this way at some point. And this will help actually maybe lay some of the groundwork for us to be better prepared for that to happen because if something that does unfold, there's going to be a big burden put on CDS, you know, trying to figure out, assist with maybe some large scale development, things like that. And I'm not making comments. I don't know anything. Trust me, I don't have a seat at those tables, you know, of whoever may be coming this way and maybe want to do something in the future. But I think we all feel it's coming at some point. So it'll help get us kind of maybe ahead of the curve a little bit. So having said all that, I'm in support of, you know, going ahead and moving forward to third and final letter.
I've got a comment if you're done, Mr. Fowler.
Done.
My concern would be is the language in this draft ordinance talks about a building inspector, the person in charge of our inspection unit under Mr. Tapp is titled Chief Building Official. And while that's not in the state code per se, it's a common title for the position at the local level. As an example, the chief building inspector in the senate is called the chief building official. It's his official title. That makes him the king of the field at the local level about commercial residential inspections and all of those things. And I think that that same position applies to our current chief building inspector, Mr. Fred Hubbellson. I think that's his title. And I think it's important that he retain that title and functional control of that unit. So I guess I would not want to see direction coming from the fire department per se other than as it might be aligned by code requirements to happen, that he would be able to follow the building code per se. I'm assuming he uses section five, two, and three? Is that mostly what they use? Because I know it's the International Building Code and some other things. That's a part of that. I don't know if that's under volume two and three or not, the fire code.
Actually, the fire chief and Fred Hubbellson have met on that very point and because Fred was concerned in, you know.
Work in a certain way.
Yeah. And they come to a meeting of minds. So that's a good point. We've been working through things like that, but that was certainly one of the major ones. So they all feel good about where they're at, I would say.
Did you have something to say?
I have nothing. I just have a second.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
As amended, right?
Yes.
Right, as amended. Roll call vote.
Does he have to read it?
Council, no.
He made it third time and taken the vote to suspend the rules. That's what the roll call's about.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Vote was five to zero. I'll read it for the third time. Amending various sections of the code of ordinance of the city of Belvista to effectuate departmental restructuring of planning, building inspection, and code enforcement functions declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
So moved. Second.
That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Fowler.
That was a motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion to approve, right.
And the emergency clause makes it.
That's a separate vote. If you have a separate vote.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Vote was five to zero. And now we do separate vote on the emergency clause.
Motion and second to approve emergency clause.
Right. And the effect of that, is it becomes effective right away as opposed to what, in 60 days or 90 days?
No. It becomes effective June.
26.
Twenty, it comes due sooner than it normally would.
Yeah.
That's why you have the emergency clause. Now, it wouldn't be immediate. The terms of this emergency clause make it effective the 26th of June.
Okay. Thank you.
So am I making a motion to approve emergency?
To approve the emergency clause.
Is that official?
Yes.
Second.
That's Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Vote was five to zero, so motion for the emergency clause passes. Thank you. Next one is item J. Resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Belvista to utilize feral aid surface transportation block grant program attributable, transportation alternatives program, and/or carbon reduction program funds to assist with the construction of the Mercy Way corridor improvements. I don't know if you folks want Emily Guffin to address this or you felt you talked about it enough at the work session or?
She went over pretty thoroughly at the work session. I'm good with that.
My only disappointment is we're not pursuing a shared cost of the additional increase from our consultant. But I support the action of opposing.
Okay. Yeah. I did notice at the work session, you brought that up. Had to do with the extra $39,000. And I think it felt that it was that some of the engineers had culpability perhaps in the conflict. And, you know, so I had a situation where it was $39,000 at stake and there was a pretty good chance somebody else was going to pay 80% of that. So Mr. Wilmes suggested maybe we should pursue litigation on that. And I didn't, I didn't think that, I appreciate any time anybody brings up any ideas. I didn't think that was prudent. I will note that I spent 38 years as a corporate attorney, deciding when to sue people and when not to, and defending lawsuits and deciding when to settle and when not to. So I felt like I was well positioned to make that decision. But I, as I said, I don't mind anybody bringing up anything. I think it's good to always throw ideas out there so I don't criticize that at all.
Please make a motion to approve. I do just have one question. I'll be very brief. Is this going to go the pace that the typical path is in? I guess my question may be, is this going to delay or slow down anything as far as the completion?
No, I don't believe.
That's it. That's all I can say. More to that. Please. Thank you. I made a motion.
A motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Wilmes. Motion to approve.
Roll call vote. Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Next one is resolution amending the 2023 budget to facilitate repayments of short-term financing indebtedness related to the purchase of new fire truck. And I believe this was brought forward by Kim Hall. And the reason was that we had thought we were going to pay cash for the fire truck and decided to finance it. So then that affects how much capital expenditures you have this year. So that was something we voted on in an earlier meeting.
Yeah. The interest on the CD essentially covers the cost of the interest on borrowed money for the fire truck. I don't, on the CD, it covers the cost of interest that we're going to pay for.
Yeah. It's a little bit mind-bending to me, to be honest. You know, normally, if you ever look at interest rates, you know, mortgage rates are such and such, and then the rates you earn on money is always less. It's always been that way my whole life, corporate-wise, individual-wise, whatever. And to have something where the amount you're borrowing, the interest rate you're borrowing adds is lower than what you're getting on investments is amazing.
Yeah. So we can hold on to our cash and put that cash back into our undersigned funds.
Yeah. So, but this resolution is just about changing the budget. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Counsel member Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2023 budget, the amount of $41,000 to authorize one additional part-time engineer position in community development services and to fund the position. This was a, something that was brought forward by me, it was discussed a lot last year, and Peter Christie was very seriously considering getting an engineer. And some of the people in CDS have indicated to me, it's a little uncomfortable when they get things from an engineer's stamp, and now they're saying, hey, that's no good, when they're not engineers, so they feel like it's not the best situation. I saw a real analogy to what I did, I was always an in-house attorney. And, you know, one of the things that happens with corporations is you have legal questions come up, and you have to go to an outside guy, and you think, oh, he's going to cost a lot of money, so you just never ask the question a lot of times. Whereas if you have an inside guy, say, hey, or a girl, you say, hey, I can go to this person, it's like a sunk cost, would you hire him? I can ask them all the questions I want, and the person gets to know the business really well, so it's a totally different kind of relationship. And we've had a little struggles with the outside people, our outside engineers have done a great job, but they're really busy, they have a lot of business. So sometimes, you know, we'll ask them something, it'll take a week to get back, and, you know, the builders, they're screaming, why is it taking so long, blah, 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 you know, it's just another delay in the process, so to speak. So I thought we dipped our toe in the water by having just a part-time engineer. Plus, I was worried about, you know, Krafton's always telling us they were short 20 engineers, so I was really worried about our ability necessarily to hire a full-time one, it's become a pretty scarce resource. So I thought, let's dip our toe in the water, try one part-time, and I suspect over time that's going to grow, but that's what this proposal's about. So any discussion? Jerry?
Right after the first of the year during the budget process, I, I know it was in the budget previously for an engineer. And I asked about that, and it was taken out because we didn't, couldn't justify the expense. That was in January, now we're just about five months, five months from that, and now then we're hiring. So what's changed in five months that we couldn't justify then, but we can now? What's changed?
Oh, I think, well, that's a good question. Well, first of all, I think people in CDS have believed in it all along, and were probably disappointed it was taken out. But if you just look at the sheer number, the sheer number of the billing, you could say, hey, wait a minute, it's not all that high, so why should we hire somebody in-house? But there's all these, well, first of all, I'm getting a part-time one, which cuts down the cost quite a bit. And there's all these intangible type of benefits I've mentioned, that, you know, they get to know our business really well, and they're more responsive, people get to know them and that kind of thing. So, again, that's a good point, it's been on the table, like I say, it was talked about last year, and I know Peter, one thing about Peter was, he kind of saw this coming, that we needed it, but on the other hand, he thought, hey, it's the end of my, my time here, I don't think I should be rushing out there and hire an engineer, you know, the last couple of months I'm in, or whatever. So, I think he thought, hey, I'll leave that to the next guy and figure that out, so. Anyway, that's a good question, Jerry.
So it's $41,000, but there still is an expense associated, so it's not really a whole $41,000, you know what I'm saying? We had money in the budget for, what would you call it, a consultant or whatever, right? Budgeted, I don't know how much that was, but, so, you see what I'm saying, you have to subtract that from $41,000 that we won't be spending, that we would have been spending.
Well, yeah, we would say some of the outside people.
It's going to cost us a little more maybe, but it's not going to be a lot.
I guess the reservation that I have is that, not knowing the coverage that is being sought in community development services, there are different licenser levels, civil engineers are civil engineers, but you get licensed in certain areas as a structural engineer, that's civil engineer, but there are structural specialties, so you have to have structural designation and be licensed that way to review structures and structural aspects of a project as opposed to just being a civil engineer. And there are other things that are specialty items that we may be depending upon our consultant to do now. As an example, review survey aspects of a document, a plat or something like that. I don't know if that's something that you do in-house here, or you have technicians that do that, or whether you pass that on to your consultant to look at plats and other things, who does that for you? That is something that a civil engineer is not licensed for unless he's a licensed surveyor as well to scrutinize those documents. So I guess my question is, are we really going to help ourselves by moving ahead with this? And I know, I know that in talking with community development services, that they're lacking in terms of being able to call someone on a timely basis and get a timely answer, because it's an outside consultant, and sometimes they're not in. I've personally been in that capacity in my prior life as a consultant, I worked with consultants when I was at Sunderton, we had consulting engineer, but there were a number of people that we would call and ask, go down the list, there was John there, there was Charlie there, there was Sam there, and depending on what we needed, we could get the answers from one of those because they were working on projects in our community. So they were familiar with things that we had on the table. So I'm not, I'm not sure whether we're maximizing our use, or maybe we're not demanding enough from our consultant today to get the best service out of them, maybe we've got the wrong firm on board, as an example. So I'm not sure, I think, I think Harvard has some good attributes across the, across the platform of consulting services for municipalities that other firms may not possess. So I think we have a good choice, we just may not have their attention or, or have an arrangement with them where we can get more timely results, is my concern. So I guess it begs the question for me, is what are we, who are we going to hire here for this rate? For a part-time experience, if you're looking for someone that's retired, they may or may not be receptive, they may or may not have the skill sets if they haven't been in design and that kind of thing currently, but they've been in a supervisory capacity, they may not be as tuned in to some of the current technology that's out there to do a fair review. So there's a whole bunch of issues that you can raise questions about. So I'm not, I'm not in the administrative side of things, so we'll rely upon you, Mr. Mayor, to tell us whether this is the right way to go, but I do have some real reservations, but it's going to be improve our functionality, and we'll be able to find someone that's going to actually be productive for us.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, did you have something?
Yes, I, I realize that it's your decision as to do you hire for this particular position, but I think before we go further with it, before we make a vote on it, that we should at least be able to see what the qualifications are, what the job description is before we
Well.
Can we know if we can get someone for this rate? You haven't tested the market one.
Well, yeah, our human resources department did some study, and we determined this would be ineffective right here. So, but, yeah, I mean, seeing as believing, like as I said, it's a, it's a tight market, right? But we can't go out and advertise and hire for somebody without your approval, certainly we're going to get somebody that CDS thinks can help them, and they're going to be heavily involved in it. But, you know, you made an interesting point really on that issue of, it's a day and age of specialization, and for instance, in my case, when I was an in-house attorney, I did a lot of things, but sometimes we still hired outside counsel. We can get into really specialized areas where, where you need that. Of course, an engineer also can help you get the right person because they're way more knowledgeable about it than you are, so. So I think it's a, it's a good way forward, but do I know how it's going to come out ahead of time? No, I don't. It's a very tough market, like I said, engineering firms are short. It's a short, it's a, we are living in a strange time of shortage of resources in many ways. You know, we're getting, we're not getting police cars on the normal, you know, the state process because you can't get them that way. That's not normal, it's never been like that. And, you know, some of the fields are very tight and difficult to get people, so.
The only thing I, I'd say, you can put a job description together, and I'm not, I'm not an expert in this field, I have no experience, right? So you can put one together, and I'm still not going to really know whether we're going to be sourcing exactly the right person or not. I'm going to have to rely on you, Glenda, Doug, to put the job description, try to source someone. What I do know is, we've been kicking around this idea of hiring an engineer for a long time, and at some point, you know, if we're going to do that, you need to take a step forward. So I'm ready to take a step forward, and let's go out and, and do the search and see what unfolds, you know, what surfaces. And hopefully, you know, it's going to be what we're looking for, that's all I can say. So I'm ready to move forward with it.
I have a quick question, this is my ignorance, so if I can get a answer, it'd be great. With city council, do we typically get a job description in full before we approve hiring a position? Is that under our purview, or is that under like the HR's purview? We say yes, we accept this position?
You control the money.
Perfect. Love it.
If it's not unreasonable, I mean, I said, not that I would know any, any difference if I saw that job description. Mr. Wilms being an engineer, I'm sure he would have some input on it, but I just think that it would, before we approve the funding, we should have an idea of what we're being, what's being hired.
Well, given our financial situation, I think asking for a part-time engineer for $41,000 frankly is a pretty modest request. We got a reserve of $18 million, and you're agonizing about spending $41,000? Come on.
I'm not agonizing.
You seem to be.
I'm not agonizing about spending $41,000, but if you spend $41,000 to hire an engineer that can't do what, what we're supposed to have, or what needs to be done, then you've got to turn around and go to the outside engineers to support what.
Well, I agree with that, there's three people sitting back there, Doug Tapp and Glenda Kilderman and Taylor Robertson, and they all know way more about it than I do. And I know they know way more about it than I do, and I'm confident they're going to hire somebody who can help us. They're not going to hire somebody and say, gee, turns out you didn't know any of the things we needed, he or she. I mean, come on. Go ahead.
Are we seeking to save any money from our consulting fees in getting this person on board? I mean, are we looking at all to save things there, or are we looking to maybe utilize that consulting service more efficiently by having this part-time position on board? Make sense?
I think you'll probably save some, and you'll probably have some of the other benefits, you know, that I mentioned. Just to give you a simple example, you know, when I became mayor in January, multiple people told me, don't do a farmer's market anymore, it's a huge mistake, it's going to be a disaster. Will you go out there on Sunday morning now and see what's going on?
Great.
Yeah. We had two candidates, and I was lucky, I hired the right one, you know, and I'm going to call it what it is, it was lucky. But I could have easily killed the farmer's market, and I didn't, and now I was hoping, I mean, you can't succeed if you don't try, you know, you can't, if you don't go to the plate, you're not going to get any hits. That's life.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call vote.
Counsel member Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
I'm going to go now.
Motion passed, four to one. The next one is amending the 2023 budget to facilitate transfer of employees and funding between departments to implement departmental restructuring of code enforcement and building inspection duties. And I believe Wanda sent out an attachment today, and also I handed it out, I think, at the meeting, that, the main thrust of the attachment that shows how many dollars are going to CDS and to, or not to CDS, to the police and to the fire. But the total budget's the same, it's just transferring around. It's mostly personnel, a little bit of it is equipment, so.
You're moving the shelves around to have the same bottom line?
Yeah.
And so, so this will be money transferred out of CDS's account into resour firing respectively?
Yeah, and that's why we had to have a date, and we picked that June 26th, you know, we had a date, the beginning of a pay period and whatnot.
Move to approve, second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Counsel member Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. A few announcements, next city council work session is 5:30 PM, Monday, June 19, Bellevista District Court. Next city council regular meeting, 6:30 PM, Monday, June 26. Planning commission work session, 4:30 PM, Thursday, June 1. Planning commission regular meeting, 4:30 PM, Monday, June 12. Boarding construction appeals, 3 PM, Tuesday, June 13, if necessary. All those are in Bellevista District Court. So unless there's anything else, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.